I am pleased to call to order the June 16th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three Commissioners, and I'm going to ask Doris Sorel to lead us in the touch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning to everybody. Today, I want to start by recognizing that June is Immigrant Heritage Month. The United States is a nation of immigrants shaped by people from around the world who leave their homes and lives and loved ones to seek refuge and opportunity in our country. Many immigrants to southeastern Pennsylvania settle in Montgomery County, where they contribute every day to our economy and our communities. Recent 2020 census data shows that 11% of the Montgomery County population is foreign-born, and that 13.9% speak a language other than English at home. These members of our community come to live in Montgomery County from across the globe. Of the 11% of our population that is foreign-born, 52.3% are from Asia, 21% are from Latin America, 18% are from Europe, and 6.7% are from Africa, and 1.6% are non-US, are from non-United States countries but in North America, like Canada. The county remains committed to being a welcoming place for all immigrants, and to make sure that we are reaching and engaging with all of our residents, we have made a concerted effort to work directly with the immigrant community and the organizations who serve them. This has meant partnering with or directly contracting with organizations to overcome language and cultural barriers to services. Many of these organizations have joined with us to provide outreach and education during the COVID-19 pandemic. They've helped us bring testing and vaccination sites to immigrant communities, led food distribution efforts, partnered with the county to prevent evictions, and continue to work with county departments on additional outreach efforts to this day. In honor of Immigrant Heritage Month, I would like to take a moment to recognize the groups that have been true partners in this work. This includes Aklamo, the Asian American Coalition, Sakati, which is the Center of Culture, Art, Technology, and Education, the Greater Philadelphia Chinese Cultural Center in Blue Bell, the Jason Center, the Korean-American Association of Greater Philadelphia, and Penn Asian Senior Services. Thank you to all of these organizations for your help and support over the years. We could not do our work without you. And now, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. This morning, I'd like to give a plug for our Health and Human Services Grocery Store Gift Card Drive, which is going on right now. Many of our neighbors contact HHS in need of basic necessities during the year, or they are referred by staff. The HHS Donation Hub strives to meet these needs in emergency situations by accepting donations and holding seasonal drives throughout the year. Food insecurity is one of the top five reasons that Montgomery County residents reach out to HHS for help, which is why the Grocery Store Gift Card Drive is so important. In 2019, there were over 100,000 Monco residents who were food insecure. The drive is running now through July 15th. You can mail a grocery gift card to the HHS office listed on the screen, or submit an e-gift card to the email address also displayed on the screen. And to find out more details, you can visit www.moncopa.org/HHSdonations, or call Veronica Hillman at 610-278-5885. Any amount is greatly appreciated and will be given to a local family in need. And we encourage everyone to give if you are able to, and thank you if you can.
All right, then we will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Mr. Stein, would you review the rules, please?
Absolutely. Good morning. All speakers should sign into the meeting sheet available in the back of the room, or if the meeting is virtual, as indicated by Ms. Cofrancisco. All speakers present should come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or remain to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration, or which may-
Objection.
Which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting.
I have an objection.
The objection is noted. Would you like to state your objection?
No, the objection is not noted until I see what the objection is.
Would you care to state your objection?
Yes, I do want to see my objection.
What is the nature of your objection?
My nature, the nature of my objection is that what applies to items on the agenda is not the same as the general. When we're in general comments, we are allowed to speak about anything that is germane to the county. It's not just about what they're going to vote on in the future. We have, first of all, to know what they're going to talk about in the future. So the agenda items are one thing, that's specific, but the general items do not come under that where they have to be moving on in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Braccio. That is, you're incorrect on that matter.
No, I'm not.
I'm going to continue on.
Did you ever read the law? Did you ever read it?
Ms. Braccio, I'm going to continue reading this. Please allow me to finish. I was stating. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to issues or items which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration, or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. A time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The Board is not required to respond to questions in public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded this is not an opportunity for dialogues and questions and answers. The Board Chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including, but not limited to, yelling from the seats, arguing whether matters germane to county business once the solicitor has made a determination of such, or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down, shall be grounds for removal from the meeting or muting without further admonishment or warning. And as always, Commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedbacks at commissioners@moncopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, Ms. Cofrancisco.
I'm sure we have all general public comment today.
Okay, great. We can proceed to that.
First, we have James Fulton. If you could come to the podium.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I live in Bridgeport, affected by Hurricane Nida. And my sister and I own the house in Bridgeport, and right now is unlivable. We are waiting and waiting. I want to thank the county for putting us up in a hotel so far, but I hear that program will stop at the end of June. Still, my sister does not have a place apart. These calls we make to the apartment people, they want three times income before they let you get a room. That's more than she gets from social security and a little pension. She cannot afford an apartment by herself. Now, these things, the reviews on some of these apartments are really tough to read, almost inhumane to live there. I was wondering, of course, I'd thank you for putting us up in this hotel, but I do not know what the future will bring at the end of June. Now, it's impossible. We talked to, I want to congratulate Sheila Wright for all her work as a county person, but we are in a situation where we don't know what's going to happen next. Communication is zero. We called the borough.
Sir, my apologies, but your two minutes are up. But I believe that somebody here will be glad to speak with you.
Yeah, Ms. O'Malley, who's sitting right there, if we have your contact info, we'll be sure to follow up with you. Okay, sir.
I'm not allowed to speak anymore.
I'm very sorry. Yeah. And we're very sorry about your-
My two minutes is up. All right, thank you for listening.
And we'll follow up with you.
Next, we have Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio, Tom Ensign Township, and I hope you really keep your word and follow up with this gentleman. I mean, really, you say that about everything to everyone, and you don't follow up. So I really hope that you keep that in a bar breath. I hope you actually follow up with him. I am really disturbed by the fact that the FDA already approved the shots for newborns to five years old, or six months to five years old. It is really ridiculous. Even the people who are making these vaccines admit that they are poison. And I just want to put out a warning to parents who are so excited to go have their children injected with this toxin. You now know, in the beginning, you didn't know. Okay, you could get a pass. You had your children injected, you had yourselves injected, but going forward, there's plenty of information out there that tells you that this is wrong, that it is dangerous. And if your child suffers from irreparable harm, or even death, then the parents really have no one to blame left but themselves, because no one is going to take responsibility for what is happening to your children. You're the parents. Stop volunteering your children for an experiment. There is no emergency anymore. So they're saying this for emergency use authorization. There is no emergency. The CDC has already said that there is no emergency. So Valerie, since you claim to be a physician and also lied on your license about being a surgeon, you know, you should tell the truth, and you should warn parents that they should not be getting this shot for their children, and they should not have gotten it for themselves. But that's past. There are things that they can do to counteract it. If anybody wants to contact me, I can give you that information. Thank you.
Next?
Next, we have Kim Henderson.
Good morning. Kim Henderson, East Norton Township. I'd just like to start with a prayer. Heavenly Father, please come into this public space, and please bless all the people of Montgomery County, especially our elected officials, that you keep, that the officials keep all of their constituents forthcoming and safe. I wanted to just mention today a Happy Father's Day to all of the fathers in the room and in the county. In these times that are turbulent, and I don't see it on the schedule today, so I just didn't want to miss the opportunity to send blessings to the family. People are struggling in this time with high gas prices and inflation, and now interest rates creeping up. And I just wanted to recognize that it is troubling, and that for fathers, for dads who stay with the family, to support and provide for them, I don't feel like we give them enough credit in life. So for every dad in the room, and in the county, I just wanted to say a Happy Father's Day. And I also wanted to say thank you to all of our first responders, including the sheriffs that are in the room today. Thank you so much for your service. I just don't think we say it enough. So thank you. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, that concludes our public comment.
All right. Next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the June 2nd, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we have three announcements today. We're going to start with Donna Richmond to talk about Juneteenth and our Arts Pros of Freedom Youth Contest winners. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to come and share the winners of the county's first Arts and Pros of Freedom contest. This was very exciting, and we were so happy and delighted to receive the artwork, the essays, and the poems from the students throughout the county. And I just want to note that this contest was part of a larger celebration that the county is involved in right now, which is a celebration of Emancipation Day, otherwise known as Juneteenth. The theme for this year's contest was the meaning of freedom. Students were asked, what does freedom mean to you? This theme offered the students an opportunity to think about what freedom meant to them, and use their imaginations and creativity to come up with a vision for what that meant to them. Students throughout the county were eligible to enter this contest. They only needed to be Montgomery County residents and attend a Montgomery County public school, private school, parochial, or homeschool. The categories were art, short essay, and poetry. And there was one winner selected from each of the grade categories, grades K through 5, grades 6 through 8, and grades 9 through 12. And I also want to thank our judges for this competition. The judge in the art category was Charlotte Stone, and these are all county partners from Sakati. For the poetry contest, the judge was Jocelyn Charles from Boyertown Senior Center and the Ricketts Center in Pottstown. And for pros, the judge was Monica DeAntonio, faculty member at Montgomery County Community College. So, on to the winners. The winner of our K through 5 art category was Jericho Jones, and you can see his artwork on the screen right now. His art piece is entitled "Freedom is Having Rights." Jericho is 11 years old and a fifth grader at East Norrington Middle School.
Next?
Our next winner is Audrey Pashuta. She's the winner of art K through 6, sorry, 6 through 8. The title of her piece is "Freedom is Love." Audrey is 14 years old and is in the eighth grade, and attends Abington Junior High School. Next is child number one, Confidential. This winner is in the winner's category of 9 through 12, and the title of this piece is Thoughts. This young person is 16 years old and is in the 11th grade at the Montgomery County Youth Center. Our next category is poetry. The winner of the K through 5 category is Ellis Barton. The title of his poem is "Freedom Means." Ellis is 10 years old and in the fourth grade at Bridle Path Elementary School. And we'll give you a second just to look at that. Okay. The next piece, a poem by Cassandra A. Van Elkenberg, is the winner of poetry category 6 through 8. The title of her piece is Tomorrow or Today. Cassandra is 13 years old and in the seventh grade at Abington High School. In our essay category, the winner for K through 5 is Penelope Thatch. The title of her short essay is "Freedom: Respect for Everyone," and we have an excerpt of her essay. Penelope is 11 years old, in the fifth grade, and attends Lower Gwinnett Elementary School. The winner of the short essay in the 6 through 8 category is David Zangwill. The title of his piece is "Which Version of Freedom Sings to You?" David is 12 and a half years old, in the sixth grade at Copper Beach Elementary School. The students will receive their certificates of achievement and prizes during the Juneteenth flag raising and reading of the emancipation, which occurs tomorrow, Friday, June 17th, at 10:00 a.m. The flag raising event will be held outside the county courthouse at the corners of Erie, East Erie, and Swede Streets. All are invited. Following this meeting, the students' poems, essays, and artwork can be found on the county's website. For all the Juneteenth programming happening throughout the county, you can also visit the county's website at moncopa.org/juneteenth. I want to extend a huge thank you to all of the students throughout the county who entered this competition, who submitted their work. But I also want to say that we very much appreciate the fact that they shared their talents and gifts with us, all of us throughout the county. I also want to thank the parents and the guardians and teachers who supported the works of these students and their submissions. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank my colleagues, Barbara O'Malley, Yvonne Turner, and of course, our wonderful communications department for all of their support in this. So again, thank you to our students, congratulations to our winners, and thank you, Commissioners.
Donna, thank you so much. This is really terrific. It's very inspiring to see these students' work. And thank you for organizing this, and thanks also to all of our judges who reviewed all the submissions. It couldn't have been easy to make these decisions. And I certainly look forward to meeting some of these students tomorrow at 10 o'clock. And of course, the public is welcome to join us at the flag raising. So, thank you.
Donna, thank you for organizing. I want to congratulate all of the students who participated, and their parents as well. And I'm looking forward to reading all the submissions once they're posted.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have an update on Careers of Tomorrow with Jane Stein. Hey Jane, hold on one second. We just need to increase the volume. One second.
Just one sec. We're going to increase the volume. It's Jenny and Jane.
Okay, try again, Jane. Or Jenny, whoever.
Morning, Jenny.
Hey Jenny.
Hi. Thank you so much for having us today. Can you hear me now well? On behalf of the Commerce Department and the Montgomery County Work Development Board, I am excited to officially announce a return to an in-person, large-scale career fair for our youth, parents, and educators in Montgomery County. This career fair, which is rebranded Careers of Tomorrow, is scheduled for September 27th at the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center in Oaks. I would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to Commissioners, to David Bellers, our Director of Commerce, and the Greater Philly Expo Center for providing us both resources and the space to make this happen. Next slide, Kelly. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, Monco worked held the end event branded as Manifest, which grew over the course of six years to Manifest and More by 2019. In 2019, as I'm sure you all recall, because you were all there, we welcomed over 60 exhibitors and 1,200 students to the Expo Center to experience careers in the manufacturing and building industries. These events were funded through the Pennsylvania Labor and Industry Business and Education Partnership Grant. So thanks also to Labor and Industry and the Governor's Office for giving us the opportunity to grow Manifest and More into something really special. In 2019, in 2020, Manifest and More was scheduled for March 10th, and we made the last-minute, difficult decision to cancel that event at the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. Since that time, we have been working tirelessly to plan a return to an in-person career exploration, knowing that hands-on experience is vital to developing career awareness. She is not joining us here today, but Melinda Anpita, who is our Special Events Coordinator, who had planned all of our prior Manifest and More events, has been working so hard to pull this together. At the same time, though, we were very much aware that employers across multiple industries are struggling to meet current labor demands, let alone plan for talent pipeline development. To support our employers in these industries, we have rebranded as Careers of Tomorrow. We also thank you again to our friends at Greater Philly Expo Center for able to double the amount of floor space for our employers in manufacturing and building trade, but also healthcare, IT, public work, education, and more. Next slide, please. We extend the invitation to our Monco schools and parents to bring students in grades 8 through 12 to the Expo Center on September 27th to learn about the careers that not only provide strong paths with family-sustaining wages, but are also the critical economic drivers in Montgomery County. Next slide. Since 2020, we have received requests from multiple employers to participate in this type of large-scale career fair. We anticipate space for over 100 exhibitors and plan to ensure that those exhibitors represent an even distribution of industry. In our efforts to guide that distribution of exhibitors, we sought labor market guidance from an expert in the field. As so happens, that expert is right here in Monco, and the data she uncovered has prompted us to additionally produce a written overview of Careers of Tomorrow, which we are hoping to publish in August. To explain a little bit more about that data and what it's like for us here in Monco, I'll turn it over to the expert herself, Jane Stein.
Thank you, Jenny. Next slide, please, Kelly. So I just want to go over a few of our current and projected labor market statistics to help explain how we supported the switch from Manifest and More over to Careers of Tomorrow with a wider range and a more diverse set of industries and employers. So as you can see here, we have two small charts, both with the top industries of today. The first one on the left is showing the top industries in Montgomery County based off the average employment, and this is as of the quarterly census of employment and wages from the Center for Workforce Information and Analysis under the PA Department of Labor. And you see that healthcare and social assistance is the top of employment in Montgomery County. And then if you look at the next part to the right, that shows by the number of establishments, the largest industries in Montgomery County, and you see professional, scientific, and technical services at the top of that one, with healthcare and social assistance right below it. And in addition to looking at the top industries of today, we also wanted to look towards the projections. Next slide, please, Kelly. All right. And this is also looking at data provided by the Center for Workforce Information and Analysis. And this is, again, two charts. The one on the left is showing the total expected, projected employment, and the top industry remains to be healthcare and social assistance. The next chart, we wanted to look at the total percent change. And there were some industries that showed a greater percent change- And there were some industries that showed a greater percent change, but smaller number of employment. So we set a baseline of growth of 2,000 or more jobs to establish priorities for the total percent change. And again, you see healthcare and social assistance at the top. So we can see that that is one of our driving industries today and tomorrow, and one of the reasons why we wanted them as well in our Careers of Tomorrow initiative. And then like Jenny mentioned, we are looking at publishing a guide to go hand-in-hand with Careers of Tomorrow initiative. Kelly, next slide please. And to do this, we were looking at occupations within one or more of those priority industries. And we ran an analysis that looked at the educational requirements, the entry level, median, and experience wages for each, and then also the number of openings to make sure that we were setting folks up for sets and family-sustaining wages in their career path. If you'll go to the next slide, you will see a sample of what guide will look like. We are going to have for each occupation, the description of what those occupations entail, the education, training, and experience requirement, entry level placement into that occupation, and then match those occupations up to some of the key industries that may employ them in the future. You can see that we have also the projected annual growth, and that is divided by the 10-year projection put out by CWIA, which is the Center for Workforce Information Analysis. We also have the location quotient, that is what LQ is. And what location quotient means is the concentration of employment in an area compared to the state overall. So again, it's a driver to show that we are setting folks up for future employment where there will be opportunities, not that they will be scrapping for a few openings here and there. Also on the guide, we will include information about entry level, average, experience wages, some basic skills that are needed, including knowledge, skills, abilities, and basic skills as they are broken up by the Center for Workforce Information Analysis. And then we will also have a link or add a QR code to a video through Career One Stop that does really fantastic occupational videos that can show the youth or career seekers general what the day-to-day of that occupation will look like for them. And again, we were planning to have about 25 occupations in this guide. It's tough to narrow them down when you know that there's need all over the place. So we are going to probably make some adjustments to that number before we finalize publication. And then I'm going to turn it back over to Jenny to get back to the Careers of Tomorrow.
Thanks so much Jane. Next slide Kelly. So anyone who is interested in learning more about Careers of Tomorrow, interested in registering either as an educator, a parent, or as an exhibitor, can visit the link there or email Melinda. Her email address is also on this slide, and or follow the QR code. Any questions?
Jenny and Jane, thank you so much. That is really exciting to see how you have re-envisioned this work. Manifest was fantastic, but it sounds like this is going to be even better. And I think creating things like this guide will be incredibly helpful for many of the attendees. So thank you so much for that. And I assume you're partnering with all of our school districts and things, as we've done before, to allow students to come during the school day. And I can remember all the buses pulling up at the last one. So hopefully we'll see that again.
Yes, that's what we're hoping for.
Great, well, thank you. Joe?
I'd just like to thank you both for all your efforts in organizing this event. It's something I believe is very important. I remember the first Manifest I attended back in 2016 at the Hattler Horsham High School. And it's great to see how this has evolved and opened to various larger spectrums of industries that are important to fill the demands when it comes to our labor force in Montgomery County. And as you mentioned, healthcare being the number-one industry, us leading the state, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and a number of manufacturing jobs that we have. And as I tour manufacturing companies and visit Chamber of Commerce's across the county, I always hear that feedback that there is a high demand for skilled labor, and it's important that our young generations are made aware of these demands at the youngest of ages. So you do a great job with communicating to our school districts and all the younger generations out there to participate in this event. And I encourage businesses, children, families to participate and continue to have this grow year after year. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you both. All right. Well, as you've all heard us say many, many times, we could not run our elections without our poll workers. And while every single one of them is fantastic, we have Dory Sawyer here to acknowledge three people who went above and beyond.
Good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present these awards today, Commissioners. First of all, I would like to recognize Elaine Lehman. She was nominated by Mr. Raymer, who is sitting right here with us today. Elaine served as a poll worker in Trap for at least 25 years. She knew most of the residents in her precinct by name, was meticulous when reconciling voters and completing some of the critical paperwork that helps us determine vote counts and reconcile registered voters with ballots issued. She helped mentor other staff members and students, teaching them how to complete the end-of-day paperwork, and assisted Mr. Raymer tremendously. Elaine was a true team leader and made everyone feel valued. She also enjoyed attending various community activities, like the Memorial Day Parade, Community Day events, and sharing homegrown vegetables with her neighbors. Elaine greeted everyone with a smile and brought joy and encouragement to all who crossed her path. Today, we'd like to honor Elaine's legacy by presenting the Outstanding Service Award to Mr. Raymer, who will present it to her family. So thank you, Ron, for bringing her legacy to our attention, for working with her for so many years, and also for serving as a judge of election yourself. Next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Mary Christman. Mary is a fixture in Royersford as the judge of election. Her organizational skills, deep understanding of election administration, and friendly, welcoming demeanor are just a few qualities that make her stand out as an asset to our team. Being an active participant and contributor to safe, secure elections is an absolute priority to Mary, so much so that even when facing a personal emergency, she coordinated with her team, with her team of volunteers and our office to ensure that the residents of Royersford had the same smooth experience they have become accustomed to. I would like to present Mary with an Outstanding Service Award to honor her dedication, resilience, and commitment to implementing free and fair elections in Montgomery County. And lastly, I'd also like to honor Mr. Jim Finne Meyer. Mr. Finne Meyer has been a champion for election engagement since at least 1976, when he brought the concept of mock convention to students at North Penn High School. Thousands of North Penn students learned to engage in political discourse with their peers, create a party platform, and develop an understanding for how parties ultimately nominate candidates. Jim also encouraged students who were of voting age to vote, work in a polling location, and stay involved in their communities. Jim personifies these ideals by serving as a judge of election in Hatfield, ensuring smooth operations and secure elections for his neighbors and community. He later became involved with post-election tabulation, adjudication, mail-in ballot canvassing, and recount procedures. Jim truly has done it all when it comes to elections. His feedback and ideas have helped shape our training modules, Election Day and Post-Election Day processes, and he is a true asset to our team. We are grateful for his many years of service, mentorship to fellow poll workers and tabulators, and calm, confident leadership. So today, I would also like to present an Outstanding Service Award to Jim in recognition of these valuable contributions.
Thanks, Dory, for all the presentations. I have to personally acknowledge Mr. Finne Meyer. I am one of those North Penn students. In 1988, we had a mock GOP convention, and I was assigned to run Pat Robertson's campaign in that, and we lost, thank God. So, but it was great to reconnect with Mr. Finne Meyer when I became a commissioner and went to tabulation for the first time over at the warehouse. And you can tell even as he led students at North Penn that he is a leader among the tabulators and the judge of elections. But as I always say, I want to thank all of our poll workers, everyone, because we simply could not run the elections without the support of our community.
Yes. And if I may, we did also have two Montgomery County residents recently become inducted into the Pennsylvania Voters Hall of Fame, which means that they have voted in 50 consecutive November elections. So I'd like to congratulate Arthur and Ethel Sirfus. Their certificates are in my office and will be mailed out to them. So they have been recognized by Governor Wolf and Secretary Chapman for their immense contribution to consistent voting habits. So congratulations to them as well.
I would just like to take a moment to thank all the poll workers. We have so many precincts across Montgomery County, and Election Day is a long day, and it's a great challenge to find volunteers and people willing to work at the precincts on Election Day. So to all those that participate in that process, we're grateful for your time and dedication.
Good morning.
My name is Reynolds Raymer, and thank you very much for being here. I just wanted to say Elaine is just an example of what I was using throughout the county. I think there's probably many people who have been there for 25-plus years. And I mean, I've been around for almost 20, and it's amazing to see the volunteerism that comes out to the election. Because a lot of times volunteers, if you look at statistics, I'm a retired EMT instructor, and I did it for 30-some years. But you see, the average volunteer is only three to five years nowadays. So to see these people come out for our elections, like right now, the staff I have helping run the election is like phenomenal, and then the word gets out and more people want to come in. I also want to commend the students who come and help us from the different schools, because it teaches them what we're doing, how we're doing it, and it gives them a little highlight on what the voting is all about. Elaine I wanted to highlight because she and I were best friends all these years that I worked. When I joined, she was there, and she guided me through how to do the judge thing, and she just really helped me in every effort. But she's also been helping all the other people who are helping us. So she's gone out of her way many times, I've seen it, to make sure the voter comes in and gets that vote in, and just, she's really, really helped out. And the part I don't think you heard is she did pass away after the two elections ago, the day after, saying, crying, oh my gosh, you think, you know, we all lost our best friend. So I did this for her family, because I wanted to do it for her when she was alive, and we'd already talked about it. So I just want to thank you very much for having us and for having Marcus come, our manager of our Trap Township, and for Dory for processing and doing it. And thank you very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate you lifting her up and helping us acknowledge her in this way, especially for her family. And we, as you just very clearly demonstrated, we could not do this without our entire community participating. This is truly public service. It's truly civic engagement, and it's what makes our democracy function. So thank you, and thank you, Dory, and look forward to hearing about more great people down the road. All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you for coming. All right, and next, we will move on to resolutions. And we will start with authorization of a planning assistance contract renewal for Bridgeport. Mr. France, is he here? Scott, hold on one second. We're having some volume issues.
Scott, can you just speak up a little bit? Hold on. I think it's us in the room. Yeah. I don't know. A little better. Just barely. Let me. Yeah. I was gonna say, do we want to change anything? Yeah, you're live.
Can we test your audio?
It has to be. The crosshair. Okay. Sorry, Scott, we're just gonna check one more thing. I don't think it's you. I think it's our system here in the room. Because we did check with folks before, so. Sorry about that. We're just gonna check one more thing. Okay, Scott, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so this is authorization to renew a three-year community planning assistance contract for Bridgeport Borough. It's a great example of municipality who did their first contract with us three years ago, and that culminated in a comprehensive plan that was created and adopted. And that relationship, I feel, was so successful, they want to continue it, as the county would like to as well. So this contract will initiate on July 1st, 2022, expire on June 30th, 2025. Scope of services include planning services for implementation of recently adopted comprehensive plan, which includes zoning and subdivision and land development ordinance updates, master parks planning, parking study, and other short-term planning and design work. The terms of the contract will be a total cost of $55,692 over three years, and the municipality pays 50% of that, as is the policy of our community planning assistance contracts. And so they will contribute $27,846 toward that effort. So you have the resolution before you.
Thank you. I will move that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approve the contract for municipal planning assistance outlined below by Director of Planning, Mr. Scott France, and the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have Mr. Hartman with an authorization of an amendment to a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the Chester Valley Trail. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nice to be here. I just have one slide, so that'll stay up there the entirety of my presentation, but I do want to point out that those are some photos of the Chester Valley Trail Extension, which I'm addressing this morning under construction. And if you drive anywhere in the Upper Marion, Bridgeport area, you may come across some of the construction activities that are going on. So as you know, Montgomery County secured federal transportation dollars under the CMAC program to help fund the development of the Chester Valley Trail Extension Project. The program has provided 80% reimbursement of right-of-way acquisition costs and 100% reimbursement of construction costs. To receive the reimbursements under the federal guidelines, the county, the Montgomery County Transportation Authority, or MCTA, and PENDOT entered into a federal aid reimbursement and assignment agreement in May of 2017. Under that original agreement, the MCTA was eligible to receive up to approximately $1.4 million for right-of-way costs, and the county up to approximately $10.2 million for construction. A subsequent amendment to the original agreement was executed in May of 2019, increasing the amount the MCTA was eligible to receive to approximately $1.5 million for right-of-way, and the county to approximately $14.5 million for construction. To date, we have completed right-of-way acquisition, and construction commenced in May of 2020. It has been determined, however, that additional funds are required to complete construction. The need for these additional funds is attributable to a number of factors following the start of construction, including a major redesign of the trail and related stormwater management facilities within the Pico Energy Corridor portion of the project area, and the resultant extension of the project schedule by several months. Other unforeseen field conditions throughout the project limits, including drainage revisions, utility test pitting, and fencing changes as examples, have also resulted in additional costs. In order for the county to access additional reimbursement funds for the additional construction costs, we need to amend the reimbursement agreement for a second time. Under the new amended agreement, the MCTA reimbursable amount for right-of-way costs will remain unchanged, but the amount the county will be eligible to receive for construction costs will increase. Based on approved and pending change orders and projected additional construction costs at this time, the amount of additional requested reimbursement from PENDOT is $2 million. While this represents the amount requested, the actual project overages will be reconciled and finalized as the project is completed. PENDOT has requested county concurrence for this amendment to the reimbursement agreement, and does require a resolution granting signature authority for the appropriate documents related to the amendment agreement.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to amend the federal aid reimbursement agreement and assignment agreement, number 064N118, with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, for the reimbursement of up to 80%. of Transportation, for the reimbursement of up to 80% of the estimated $1,836,000 right-of-way costs, as well as for 100% of the estimated $16,438,000 construction costs. Be it further resolved that the county's chief clerk and chief operating officer, Mr. Lee Sokizziak, is hereby authorized to attest to the execution of this letter of amendment and affix the county seal, and to certify a true and correct copy of this authorizing resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Mr. Hartman, do you care to prognosticate the completion date of this trial?
Well, it's always seems to be moving. Without getting into too much detail, right now, the drainage structures for the PICO Energy Corridor are the critical path item for this project, and they're estimated to arrive in September. They could come in earlier, and if they do, that will be a good thing, but given the projected arrival date and the conservative estimate of that, that work in the PICO Corridor really won't gain traction until then. And while most of that work will be finished, most of the physical trail work will be finished this fall, the seeding and topsoiling that would need to occur following that work is now showing to occur in April of next year. Now, having said that, I have every intention, and I've already told this to the project team, that we want to make this happen and be finished in 2022. And we're already talking about ways to do that creatively. It's going to come down to a cost comparison ultimately between what the cost would be for it to end in April versus putting on some additional crews and doing some adjustments to sequencing to finish it this fall. So we'll do that cost comparison and make a decision, and I'll certainly keep you updated.
So it's literally a supply chain issue, like culverts or something that we're waiting for?
Well, yeah, manufacturing, I think, has been slowed. There's a lot of demand, and our contractor, Alan Myers, has a great relationship with the company that produces these. And so, like I said, we're hoping that even if they come in just a handful of weeks early, that could really make a difference. So I would say in July, we'll have a much better sense as to where this is going to finish out, but I am bound and determined to do what we can to make it, make it rapid.
That's what I like to hear. Any other questions? Okay, all right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right. Mr. Georgetown, authorization of bond reimbursements for capital expenditures.
Morning, Commissioners. This one's pretty straightforward. As you know, at the last Commissioners' meeting, the board approved a bond ordinance, and the finance team has been moving ahead on the bond issue. We expect to go to market by the end of this month. We're actually preparing for a rating agent presentation, which will be made tomorrow, and then all the necessary steps after that will follow. The closing, if everything goes as planned, will be the end of July. That's when we'll get the new bond proceeds. At the moment, we probably have about $15 million of capital bond proceeds from the 2021 bond issue, so we'll continue to pay capital bills with those bond proceeds until they run out. If that's before the closing date of the new money bond issue, then we'll borrow from the general fund and then repay it as soon as we close on the new money bond issue, so that we continue paying our capital bills. I would expect that we'll probably have a little bit of that maybe in, you know, mid-July to the end of July, where we'll have to borrow from the general fund. But we've done this before, and we immediately reimburse the general fund once the bond closing is done. So it's our recommendation that the board approve this resolution as presented.
Thank you. I will move that the Board of Commissioners of Montgomery County does resolve and declare its intent that the issuance of debt by the county be in an amount reasonably expected not to exceed $197,500,000 in principal amount for the project, that the issuer be reimbursed from the proceeds of debt for expenditures paid for the project not more than 60 days prior to the date of this resolution, for expenditures pertaining to costs of issuance, for expenditures that do not exceed the lesser of $100,000 or 5% of the proceeds of the issue, or for expenditures that do not exceed 20% of the aggregate issue price of the bonds which constitute preliminary expenditures within the meaning of applicable U.S. Treasury regulations. Be it further resolved that this resolution be determined to be a declaration of official intent under U.S. Treasury regulations promulgated under the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, and that the issuance of debt occur not later than 18 months after the latest of, one, the date on which the earliest expenditure subject to applicable U.S. Treasury regulations is paid, two, the date on which the property is placed in service or abandoned, but in no event more than three years after the earliest expenditure is paid, or three, the date otherwise permitted by the code or Treasury regulations promulgated thereunder. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption of this 16th day of June 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment?
Yes. At the last board meeting, I opposed the new money bond borrowing, and it's well-known that I do not agree with the capital expenditures reflected in this authorization, so I'd like to request a roll call vote on this.
Ms. Washington? Hi.
Hi.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Georgetown. Next, we have Mr. Stein for approval of amendments to the collective bargaining, bargaining agreements with ASME Local 676, ASME Local 1582, Teamsters Local 384, PSSU Local 668, and Montgomery County Detective Bureau. Mr. Stein?
Yes, thank you. Following up on the actions taken by the board recently to address recruitment and retention issues facing the county, the county is in the process of working out agreements with our represented employees that work under collective bargaining agreements, including those employees that are vital to public safety, including our sheriff's deputies, adult and juvenile probation, as well as other public safety employees, including our corrections officers. We have negotiated draft agreements with the majority of the unions representing these employees, and will be ready to execute three of the agreements assuming the vote to approve today. We anticipate the others will follow shortly thereafter. The agreement with the one ASME group also formalizes a planned change in the hours of many of the court-related offices, road offices permitting them to extend their public hours.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary amendments to the respective collective bargaining agreements to provide a pay increase of 3% to the members of American Federation State County and Municipal Employees Locals 1582 and 676, Service Employees International Union Local 668, Teamsters Local 384, and the Montgomery County Detective Bureau. Be it further resolved that the above representative, represented employees will also be eligible for sign-on bonuses and premium pay as outlined in the attached Exhibit 1. Be it further resolved that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into an amended contract with the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees Local 676, to change certain represented employees' weekly work hours to 37.5 hours per week. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stein. Next, we have reappointments to the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Council. I will move that Dr. Juan Sun Chung, Dr. Carol Whitman, Nancy Becker, and Lisa Barbiero be reappointed to the Montgomery County Drug and Alcohol Planning Council, for terms to begin immediately and to expire in June 16, 2025, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion is approved. Next, we have Commissioners' appointments to the Montgomery County Workforce Board. I will move that Kelly Weiss be appointed as a business member to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board for a term to begin immediately and to expire on June 16, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And I just want to thank all of our members of our boards and commissions for their volunteer service to the county. All right, Ms. Perdue, personnel report, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners' Department's Personnel List. It is a three-page document dated Wednesday, June 15, 2022, with a timestamp of 1:30 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the June 16, 2022 personnel presentation is given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donald Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Ms. O'Malley?
Yes, we have some bids and RFPs. One is a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for portable toilet rentals. The successful bidder will provide portable toilet rental service to parks, trails, and historic sites, and other county departments as needed. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for a bridge replacement. The successful bidder will provide the replacement of County Bridge Number Six that carries Mill Creek Road over Mill Creek in Lower Marion Township. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for engineering services. The successful responder will provide design and engineering services for the demolition of County Bridge Number 145, Roberts Road over Skipback Creek in Lower Salford Township. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Four, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for a comprehensive testing provider. The successful responder will provide continuation of COVID-19 testing services at the Office of Public Health. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Five, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for a food resources program. The successful responder will provide aging nutrition services and distribution of senior farmer's market nutrition program, commodity supplemental food program, and supplemental nutrition assistance program to eligible consumers 60 or older. Montgomery County Office of Senior Services is the fiscal agent for the state food purchase program and the emergency food assistance program managed through Montgomery County. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.mccpa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of bids and RFPs, RFPs as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have awards of contract for the county. Yes, one, contract award, assets and infrastructure, construction inspection services, McMahon Associates Incorporated of Port Washington, PA, $176,235.66. Contract provides construction inspection services for the replacement of County Bridge Number Six, Mill Creek Road over Mill Creek in Lower Marion Township. RFP 2236 was viewed by 23 providers with five responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder.
Two, contract award, Health and Human Services, advertising campaign, National Cinemedia LLC of Centennial, Colorado, $37,400. Contract provides a summer media campaign to engage in outreach services to parents and children regarding substance abuse. Services are sole source for on-screen and in-theater advertising at selected theaters under the ownership of providers. Three, contract award, Health and Human Services, adult daycare services, multiple providers not to exceed $450,000. Contract provides adult daycare centers which will operate for portions of a 24-hour day and offer an interactive, safe, supervised environment for older adults. RFP 2229 was viewed by 16 providers with 12 responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest-rated responders. Contract is for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. The list of awarded providers is located in the back of the room. Four, contract award, Health and Human Services, outreach services, multiple providers not to exceed $420,000. Contract provides for language-inclusive information assistance and outreach services to residents of Montgomery County aged 60 years and older who require a connection to services. RFP 2230 was viewed by 14 providers with two responses received. Contracts are awarded to the only responding providers who have met all qualifications of the RFP. Contracts are for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. Awarded providers are Alamo of Norristown, PA, and Penn Asian Senior Services of Philadelphia, PA. Five, contract award, Health and Human Services, training, RI International of Phoenix, Arizona, $202,800. Contract provides certified peer specialist training for peer support specialists, who will support Montgomery County residents experiencing mental health challenges. RFP 2231 was viewed by 11 providers with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. Six, contract award, Health and Human Services, support services, the Council of Southeast Pennsylvania of Doylestown, PA, $630,000. Contract provides expanded drug and alcohol recovery support services within Montgomery County, including training and education, family support, and recovery center support. RFP 2235 was viewed by 19 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Contract is for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. Seven, contract award, Human Resources, Commercial Lines of Insurance, KMRD Partners Incorporated of Warrington, PA, $1,432,064. Contract authorizes the purchase of 27 insurance policies for commercial liability coverage for 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2023 term. Contract will cover general liability, law enforcement liability, business auto, public officials liability, employment practices liability, lead excess, first excess, property, pollution liability, fine arts for Peter Wentz Farmstead, Penny Pack Mills, and Pots Grove Manor, fine arts for Audubon Collection fiduciary liability, crime, healthcare professionals, lawyers professionals, excess workers compensation, travel accident for the bomb squad, accidental death and dismemberment for economic and workforce development programs, adult probation, and for volunteers, foster parents liability, and seven flood policies. Eight, contract award, information and technology solutions, software licenses, SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, $75,081.22. Contract provides various Adobe design and editing software license renewals for a one-year term. Software renewals are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Nine, contract award, information and technology solutions, video conferencing service, Zoom Video Communications Incorporated of San Jose, California, $85,585.50. Contract provides the Zoom Enterprise Host, Room Connector, and Webinar 3000 annual cost for service. Contract is for a one-year term, services proprietary. Ten, contract award, information and technology solutions, equipment, SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, $27,936.36. Contract provides for 12 tablets and accessories for use by the Office of Children and Youth. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract award, public safety, warehouse shelving, H&amp;K Equipment Incorporated of Gropple's, PA, $123,349.70. Contract provides shelving in the new warehouse under construction at the Emergency Operations Center campus. Shelving is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Twelve, contract award, public safety, system upgrade, Carousel Industries of North America of Exeter, Rhode Island, $37,163. Contract provides an upgrade to the 911 recording system in preparation for the 2022 public safety radio system upgrade. System and services are proprietary. Contract award, purchasing, liquid fuel, Riggins Incorporated of Island, New Jersey, $800,000. Solicitation was issued by Bucks County on behalf of the southeastern PA County's Cooperative Purchasing Board. Contract provides heating oil, diesel fuel, and gasoline for countywide use. Contract is valid 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2024, and allows for two optional annual renewals. Fuel prices are based on actual net acquisition cost of fuel, inclusive of all rebates and discounts, but cannot exceed the average daily price index on the day of delivery. Fourteen, contract renewal, assisted living, Human Good Pennsylvania of Lafayette Hill, PA, $48,720. Contract provides for the assisted living needs of one former resident of the county assisted living facility. Contract is valid through 6/23/2023. Fifteen, contract renewal solicitor, legal services, multiple providers, as needed. Original contract provides outside legal counsel services on an as-meeted basis. This is the first available of three optional annual renewal terms. A list of the qualified firms is located in the back of the room. Sixteen, contract amendment, assets and infrastructure services, Don Milner Architects Incorporated of Chad's Ford, PA, no cost. Original contract provided a historic structure report for Pots Grove Manor. Amendment provides a no-cost time extension of the contract through August 15, 2022, to complete the final draft of the report. Seventeen, contract amendment, planning commission, Bowles Smith Associates Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $55,262.20. Original contract provided the engineering design of the Chester Valley Trail situated within Upper Marion Township, Bridgeport Borough, and of Norristown as per RFP 1602. Amendment provides additional design and coordination due to changes required by PICO within their right-of-way along the trail. Eighteen, contract amendment, planning commission, engineering, Alfred Bennett and Company of Allentown, PA, $13,550. Original contract provided engineering services required for flood mitigation design at 6007 West Valley Green Road in White Marsh Township. Amendment provides for unanticipated expenses in regard to obtaining the required permits from White Marsh Township. Amendment provides for continued Amendment provides for continued professional engineering, construction faves services related to subsurface utility engineering to designate an existing septic tank drain field and related adjustments to the wall design location as a result of those findings. Nineteen, contract amendment, Public Safety, Rescue Training Props, Nice Construction Services Incorporated of Sellersville, PA, $147,786.25. Original contract provided onsite construction for vehicle and trench rescue training props at the Public Safety Training Campus. Amendment provides for costs and labors to remove and replace unsuitable soil materials for the project site. Twenty, contract amendment, Public Safety, Roof Replacement, Mon Roofing Corporation of Hatfield, PA, $1,301. Original contract provided replacement of the upper level and lower level of the two-story fire and EMS administration and training building located on the Public Safety Training Campus. Amendment provides additional insulation determined to wet, required removal, and replacement. And twenty-one, one contract, one renewal, and 26 amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room. And thank you, Lee.
I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract under emergency procurement for Hurricane Ida.
Yes, there is a contract award, Assets and Infrastructure, Tank Removal Service, J&amp;J Environmental of Fairview Village, PA, $43,934. Contract provides removal of gas, diesel, sewage tanks, and replacement of tanks at the Old Mill House at Central Park Human Valley Park and Penny Packer Mills, which were damaged in Hurricane Ida.
I will move to approve the preceding award of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have additional awards of contract under emergency procurement.
One, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Consultants, RSM US LLP of Davenport, Iowa, $48,000. Contract provides an emergency forensic investigation on the county network and affected devices due to a network security incident. Two, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, Staffing Services, Eastern Business Software Incorporated of Brumal, PA, $52,000. Contract provides the emergency engagement of three temporary employees to assist with network security incident. Three, contract award, Public Safety, HVAC replacement, Bergy's Electric Incorporated of Hatfield, PA, $62,165. Contract provides the temporary emergency repairs and emergency replacement of the HVAC system at the EOC 911 server room to maintain proper operating temperatures critical to the operation of the equipment.
I will move that the county commissioners, I will, there, let me start this one over. I will put on the floor a motion by the county commissioners that actual emergencies existed as defined by Section 1802B of the County Code, thereby permitting the county of Montgomery, through its chief clerk, chief operating officer, and the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into such contracts without meeting the requirements of Section 1802 of the County Code, as may be required to restore and maintain the county's computer network, and as may be required to restore and maintain the county's emergency operating center's 911 server room HVAC equipment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, awards of contract for assets and infrastructure for major construction projects.
Yes, one, contract award, Security System Update, Integrated Security Systems of Harleysville, PA, $29,138. Contract provides the installation of a security access control panel to the newly-built electrical rooms in One Montgomery Plaza. Equipment and installation services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure, Engineering, Gannett Fleming Incorporated of Camp Hill, PA, $10,600. Original contract provided engineering and surveying to establish baseline parameters related to vibration and noise monitoring during the Montgomery County Justice Center project, to establish the plan for needed mitigation and future monitoring measures after construction starts. Amendment provides for the last month of vibration and noise monitoring services, which closes out this contract with service concluding 5/31/2022.
I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment?
I'll require a roll call vote.
Ms. Washington? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next, we have awards of contract for the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force.
Yes, one, contract award, Software, Scope Now Incorporated of New York, New York, $25,500. Contract provides intelligence software for use during terrorism, other threat to crime prevention, and investigation activities by the Bucks County detectives. Software is proprietary. Two, contract renewal, Software Licenses, Data Miner Incorporated of New York, New York, $44,000. Contract provides the annual renewal of five first alert licenses with support and maintenance for Chester County. The software system alerts responders to breaking events, enabling the fastest real-time incident response. Software is proprietary.
I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. Are there any closing commissioner comments? All right, then I will announce that our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be July 7, 2022, and I will move to adjourn the June 16, 2022, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative vote? Meeting is adjourned, and we will move to Salary Board. Is the controller online?
Morning.
Morning. All right, Ms. Francisco, do we have any public comment on Salary Board? All right, then, Ms. Perdue?
Good morning. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, June 15, 2022, with a timestamp of 1:30 p.m. Of note, we have six retirees, Angela Hamilton from adult probation after 29 years, Mary Ann Bronka from courts after one year, Thomas Garrity from Public Safety after 12 years, Sharon Prieto from Voter Services after 17 years, Michael Austin from the Youth Center after 43 years, and Lucille Granazio from the Youth Center after 21 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the June 16, 2022 Salary Board presentation is given by the Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
To move.
Move by Commissioner Lawrence? Second. By Controller Sanchez. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And I understand we have a retire reacknowledgement this morning? Our Clerk of Courts, there she is, Lori Schreiber, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners and everybody here for Salary Board. It is with very mixed emotions, both happy and sad, that I speak to you today. I'm happy to have the opportunity to publicly recognize a well-respected member of my staff, who probably most of you know, and to have a few minutes to tell you all how valuable she is to the county. But I am also sad, as we are recognizing her due to her plans to retire after working for the county for about 25 years. So Linda Sulak is the second deputy in the Clerk of Court's office. She started in 1997, when her previous employer was starting to have layoffs in their company. And on the advice of a friend, she thought she could get just a temporary job with the county while she looked for something better. But thankfully for me and for my office, that plan changed as she became more interested in her employment here. Linda worked at various positions throughout the Clerk of Court's office for a few, for her first few years, but she was quickly promoted to second deputy due to her strong work ethic and aptitude to learn various aspects of the court procedures. There were challenges over her years here, but she helped bring our office through them with flying colors. During her 25 years, Linda worked for three different elected Clerk of Courts, helped to organize a massive office expansion and renovation, saw the office through a major changeover in the state computer system in the way that things, that court cases would be docketed, and in fact, CPCMS has really become her baby, and then helped our office navigate through the necessary staff modifications needed during a pandemic. Through all of those changes, Linda's dedication to having a well-run office never wavered. Linda's institutional knowledge has been invaluable in so many situations, and though we will try to reorganize without her, we know we cannot replace her. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to publicly say goodbye to Linda Sulak, second deputy in the Clerk of Court's office.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate those wonderful words, and we absolutely wish her the best. All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn the June 16, 2022, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
Make the motion.
Okay, move by Commissioner Lawrence. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.